Okay. We will call the July 1st. Commissioner's Board of Representatives stands and pledges.
...........................................................................
All right, Campbell, we are ready to call the roll.
Townsend?
Here.
Poole?
Here.
Bev?
Here.
Allen?
Here.
Frederick? Tackett?
Here.
Craig?
Here.
Thomas?
Here.
Boyd?
Here.
Eight present, one absent, we have approved.
Okay, yes, sir, I motion to approve the minutes from the June 3rd meeting. Okay, second. Okay, that was Townsend and Bob. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, they will stand approved.
Mr. Chairman, before we get started, I'd like to do a little procedural housekeeping, if that would be okay.
Okay.
Commissioners, uh, I had a discussion with y'all at one time about how we need to kind of streamline, how we do our meetings. So, we'll make a motion, somebody make a motion to discuss and possibly take action. Then the commission, and then there'll be a second, then the commissioners will discuss. Once the discussion is finished, a commissioner can call for a, call for a roll, vote, roll call vote, or the chairman can do so. If can, if discussion is going on too long for one of you, you can call for a question. But we don't have to make a second motion to move forward. The one motion to discuss and possibly take action is all that we will need. Secondary motions like to defer, or those, you can make those at any time after the second. Also, if there's an item on the agenda that you do not want to discuss, you do not have to make a motion, you do, or there doesn't have to be a second, and it can die from lack of a motion, or from lack of a second. Okay?
Okay, and also, if you make that motion to discuss and possibly take action, that is in the form of a positive, that's implied that that's a positive motion?
Correct, thank you. And so, if you're for it, you vote yes, if you're getting, you're not in favor of it, you would vote no. Okay? Also, it's apparent that our old, one of the people associated with our old business is not here, and he would like to be here. If it's the commission's pleasure, could we roll the old business to the last item of business on our agenda? And that would need to be taking place as a motion to do so.
Someone, good motion. You got a motion from Tony?
Yes.
And?
Mr. Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, Dustin's second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So, the four of you will be at the bottom of our agenda today.
Thank you.
All right, under new business, 5.1, discuss and possibly take action on a rezoning request for 5650 and 5680 Hall Lane from CG to MRO. Is there a motion to that effect?
So.
Okay, I heard two motion, who wants to be the second?
I'll be second.
Don't think Buzzy was second, Dustin was first. All right, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The, uh, the new business here on Hall Lane, 5650, the owners came in and discussed with our codes department, the need to get an exception building, building permit. While they were doing that, they discovered that they rezoned CG even though they have a residence on the property and not commercial use. And that's been rezoned, that was zoned commercial CG in 99, when we annexed that strip down to the Green Bar City limits. So, CG zoning will not allow, in the event that their house is destroyed due to a natural disaster, or it burns down, it will not allow them to rebuild their home. And so, they want to do that, they would like to rebuild their home in the event of a natural disaster. So, next door, next door to their property, this is their property, 56, 5650, this four, seven acres, is this MRO. They would like to be rezoned to MRO because MRO allows single-family detached dwellings to be built in an MRO district, along with multi-residential. So, um, when we posted the rezoning sign on this property, these gentlemen asked what was going on, and when they found out the reason for those sales rezoning, they came in with a rezoning application, paid their fee because they're in the same situation. They have a residence, and they don't, in the event of a natural disaster, they want to be able to rebuild their residence. So, MRO is still a commercial zoning. It, you know, it touches B and B machine, so if it, in the future, if somebody was to buy those properties and want to go to light manufacturing, it would be allowed in a CG, they still have the availability to rezone it back, but it's still an MRO commercial, and they have the, these people have the ability to rebuild their homes in the event that it's destroyed. So, staff recommends that we rezon their property.
What is the status of Hall Lane there? Is that a city road, or is that a driveway, or?
Well, I don't, I think it's a private road. Mr. Moore was supposed to be here, but something came up and he wasn't, couldn't make it, and he would know more exactly whether that's our road or their road. You know, looking at the tax maps, it shows, it, it shows it as this parcel is all the way to the, right away of Highway 41 South. So, that would lead me to believe that it is not our property.
It was real narrow and just tarred chip and kind of pretty rough shape.
Mm-hmm.
And the sound out of it, out of the road was just a little something that somebody put up, I think.
So, that, that may leave, you know, the county may not even be maintaining it because it may be private. See, if it's in bad shape, you know, the county maintains the roadways pretty well, so I'm gonna say it's a private road.
There's four, based on where I'd see on the map, at least four properties that use Hall Lane as their access.
Yes, I would agree. And I can only assume that there is an easement across there, um, you know, we, we haven't done anything since it was annexed in 99, I believe, other than annex the properties.
But is Hall Lane the actual city limit border?
No, sir, it's not. The border is this, this area right here. Goes down through there, so it goes around, it, it takes in those parcels like that, that's the CG zoning within the cities.
That's the B and B machine?
That's B and B machine, this is that Church of Christ right there.
Okay, any other questions?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve.
Okay.
They don't have to do that anymore, you just call for a question on the motion.
Okay.
Thank you.
We're ready to vote, Kim.
Allen?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bev?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Tackett?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Eight?
Passed eight out.
Eight approved.
All right, item number 5.2, under new business, discuss and possibly take action on the review of the planned unit development overlay, cancellation for three parcels on New Chapel Road. Is there a motion on this item? That doesn't count as a motion.
That does not count as a motion.
So moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Bob and Buzzy. All right, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As we've discussed, we've talked about planned unit developments extensively over the last year or so. And in 2007, the owner of that property, those properties, these three parcels, brought that in for annexation and requested rezoning of all of these, these three parcels to R-15 Planned Unit Development Overlay, we'll just call it R-15 pud moving forward. As we have discussed about planned unit developments, you have to start your planned unit development, actual construction on the planned unit development has to begin with any year from the final reading of the resolution, if it's annexed, or the ordinance, if it's rezoned to that. Needless to say, that didn't take place. We sent letters to the three property owners, I heard back from Mr. Smith, and I heard back from the Manises here, I have not heard back from the Cobbs, so I can just assume that they're okay with it. So, what we're doing, what we want, what staff is recommending to the planning commission is that you vote in favor of removing the planned unit development overlay from these three parcels and rezone it back to R-15. So, we will be technically rezoning this property from an R-15 pud back to R-15. The R-15, the overlay, allows somebody to come in, buy it, and do lots half the size, potentially, as opposed to a 15,000 square foot lot, they could go down to 7,000, the ordinance allows smallest 5,000 with a 40-foot frontage. So, I think it's a liability for the city to leave those just hanging out there, and staff's recommendation is, of course, to remove the planned unit development overlay and get this rezoned back to R-15.
All right, any questions or discussion? Bob?
Can this, is, I'm assuming it's legal to do it without home, without owner's permission?
Yes, sir.
Or knowledge? I mean, just because you sent them a letter, does that mean they've been notified?
The, they were sent by certified mail, uh, the, the ordinance says having been notified. So, we've notified them, like Mr. Manise called today, 'cause he didn't really understand it, once I explained it to him, he was like, "I'm good with that." Lee came by two weeks ago for some other business and stuck his head in my door and just said, "I'm good with that, David," and I can only assume that Ms. Cobb is as well. So, we, we've notified them, and it, you know.
As long as, as long as the legality of it is not an issue, then?
It says we're notification.
Two out of the three agree, so.
Mm-hmm. And, and we're not creating a non-conforming situation because the two smaller parcels are over an acre each, you know, and it's a 15,000 square foot minimum lot.
All right, any other questions? Comments? Is there a call for a vote? Call for a question. Okay, question's been called, Kim, we're ready to vote.
Townsend?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Bev?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Tackett?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
All right, item number 5.3, is discuss and possibly take action on the review of the planned unit development overlay, cancellation for two parcels on William A. Batson Parkway. Is there a motion on this item? Who's that, Dustin?
Dustin.
Is there a second?
Second.
And Ms. Boyd. All right, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We're doing some pud overlay housekeeping. This is two parcels on William A. Batson Parkway, one 20, approximately 20 acres, one approximately 3.4, similar situation, it was annexed 2006, rezoned 2007 to RS 20 with a planned unit development overlay. They did not begin construction, there's nothing, you know, they made, they submitted a preliminary or a final pud master plan and a subdivision plan and commercial drawing, or construction drawings, but they never moved forward, we're in the same situation, you know, staff recommends that we remove the planned unit development overlay. With that said, Mr. Blake Batson and Ms. Lisa Gupton are here, and they may wish to speak to this removal.
Okay.
Come on up here, Blake.
Come on up.
Thank you, David. First of all, I want to say David's been great to work with, I know David personally, he does a great job, and he does what he has to do, and I respect that. We did submit a plan back in 2006, 2008, and that's when the economy hit, and we kind of shut down, but during the time, you know. I live right here on Batson, so that's right around where I want to live. And what I'm kind of asking to say is, I'm willing to work with David in the future, actually, it's my sister's property, I'm just speaking for her, I live here, my sister owns that, and I own some of the property behind it, so that's, that's my life, that's where I'm gonna live, that's where I'm gonna stay. And the way that I see the town, one reason we didn't develop is because the town was growing, and being smart business people, we don't want to build right now. We kind of hold off, 'cause a lot of stuff might change off on that side of town, it could be restaurants, it could be gas stations, it could be whatever, and do I want to put a whole subdivision all around my house? No. Do I want something nice up around the college, around the high school and all that? Yes, so, a lot of the stuff, and I understand taking it away. All I want to ask is if we could, in the future, if I bring a whole new set of master plans, whole new concept this way, that y'all be gracious and maybe work with me on maybe getting another overlay if it works out, is all I'm asking, and I do respect David on what he's trying to do, and I think that, I understand that. So, but all I'm saying is, in the future, we would like to be able to submit something maybe bigger, maybe smaller, a lot more different kind of stuff, I think, the town is growing very rapidly, and Dr. Kumar just sold some property, and we're just holding on with ours to see, angle, I want that end of town to be more upscale, I want it to be more high-end, and I think it can be that. After they connect the road all the way through, you know, a lot of potential out that way. So, that's all I have to say, and I just, in the future, I understand you got to do what you got to do tonight, but in the future, I would love to be able to work with you to maybe get the overlay back if it happens to come up.
Okay. Okay, questions? Bob? I'd like to make sure the minutes reflect that, that if the planning, if we do remove it, 'cause who knows, overlays can change, and there may be a better overlay that would come down, down the pike, so, but let me sure that we reflect in the minutes the conversation of removing it at the, not the desire, but the willingness of the owners, and that for future potential that it would be looked upon favorably by the planning commission, should a new overlay be requested.
It will be reflected.
Call for question? We got the call for question. Ready to vote.
Allen?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Bev?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Tackett?
Yes.
Townsend?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
All right, we will come back to old business now, and this is to discuss and possibly take action on rezoning requests for 3220, R. Batson Lane from B, R-10 to MRO, and 2663 South Main from R-40 to MRO. Is there a motion on this item?
So moved.
Well, y'all are right together.
I'll be second, please.
Okay, Dustin and Buzzy. All right, Dave.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You guys had seen this previously, uh, there has been a minor change, uh, Mr. Trout and Mr. Brand have been able to make arrangements to potentially purchase these two parcels that are approximately 1.8 acres, uh, and add it to this 20 and a half acres, but there's two different zonings there. The, the smaller two parcels are zoned R-40, and the larger parcel is zoned R-10. Now, the reason that they've done that was, obviously, there was a need for a second entrance, and a better entrance than what was proposed by itself at R. Benton Lane. This is what they have proposed presently, they've got this commercial area that's about 55,000 square feet, they have got an entrance and a, and a left and right out here, separated with a median, they have got another entrance down here, but Josh did an excellent job, it's not easy to get out of there, you have to make a, you have to navigate through this intersection to actually get down here, it's a, it's a preferred right-hand turn, out. We haven't worked out the details of that yet, but, but this one, like I said, was that, it's a potential, it has the potential to do 235 townhomes. The thing that I would like to discuss with you as well, this started before we started contemplating at the last planning commission meeting, the change in bulk regulations, um, I think it's only fair to Mr. Trout and Mr. Brand that if we move forward with this rezoning from R-10 and R-40, and the planning, and the boardman in autumn chooses to do so as well, that we allow them to stick with this concept for a year after the third and final reading of the ordinance, and that way, that'll give them plenty of time to get started, and if they're not able to get traction within a year, it falls back on your, the new bulk MRO regulations that have been proposed, those may or may not go forward as well, but right now, they're moving forward. So, that's what my recommendation is, we, our recommendation, our staff's, is to rezon the properties, and the bigger one from R-10, the two smallers from R-40 to MRO, and allow them to have the commercial, 'cause they actually, first people that come to us with commercial, we'd ask and they deliver it, so I think it's only fair that we work with them, and then allow the, the commercial, I mean, the residential development rest away. Their intent is to sell, you know, should, you know, they get some up and the economy go south, they'll rent until they, you know, the economy comes back, and then they'll sell, but their intent is to promote homeownership within the city limits of Springfield, am I correct in speaking it?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Trout and Mr. Brand are here, and if you have any questions, they are not, they have not been caught off guard tonight, they are well aware of what we're talking about.
Okay, and all city department heads are good?
Yes, Mr. Moore and I had a couple of Zoom meetings with them, and Mr. Moore is satisfied with this layout and these entrances.
Okay, questions?
Is that a walking trail?
Yes, it is.
And there's a little playground out there, maybe a little gazebo, and what's not shown is there's a lot of trees there, and a bunch of them are gonna have to be replaced, according to the landis, landscaping ordinance, so, this is a preliminary layout, um, but I think it's a, a fair one. Right now, their density is at 43, 43.35, is that it? Josh? At least 4,300 square feet. 4,200. So, you know, they're, they're higher, their density is less than, than what we, you know, 'cause more than 4,000, if they did 12%, this is 6% of their gross area. So, do you have any questions of them or staff?
Might be a good spot for a roundabout. Could have to see these first roundabouts.
We got one coming in the, that GVTP Planned Unit Development.
All right, I'm not hearing any more questions.
Sounds like everybody's on board, that one extra entrance is really gonna alleviate all that traffic, everybody's on board, I'm assuming.
Yes, staff is on board.
Is there a call for question?
Call for vote.
Okay, we're ready to vote.
Townsend?
Yes.
Poole?
Yes.
Bev?
Yes.
Allen?
Yes.
Tackett?
Yes.
Craig?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Passes eight to zero.
All right, uh, it says on my agenda, there will be no BZA meeting July 13, Buzzy?
That is correct, we had no business, so, uh, we will, actually, Kimberly will be sending an email tomorrow, notice tomorrow, telling you guys of that. Want to take a moment, next month, we're gonna do a little training after our planning commission meeting, Safe Sacks with the electric department is gonna come in and discuss how we deliver power to our customers in the city limits of Springfield, I think that it's, it's important that you guys understand what services that we deliver, I'm not asking you to become electrical engineers or linemen or anything like that, but I think it's important that you know what we have to do to provide these services. Soon thereafter, we will be having one from the gas department, we're gonna have one from the electric, from water wastewater, and we'll have the fire department come in and talk to you, so we're gonna do some, you know, department training so that you know what the city of Springfield does when we do development. And one more item, or after item, tomorrow, July the 2nd, first Friday night market, starts at 6:00, if you missed Buzzy last time, you missed out, it was fabulous, there was, there were about 3,000 people at the last one, people were ready to get out and see other people, so, look forward to hopefully seeing you guys out there tomorrow night, and thank you for your service to your community, we appreciate it very much.
The demolition that they're doing right toward Wood Bat's Boulevard Forks Off, I guess it was an old motel at one time, is there any plans for that?
Bat's?
Right up by Born and Raised, right there.
Yeah, right across from Born and Raised.
Oh, that is the old Creamery.
Yeah, Ice Cream joint, yeah.
That's the old Creamery, that building was condemned, I want to say, seven, eight years ago, we've been through a legal battle with the owner. We finally got, you know, the pandemic put us off for a while, we finally got a judgment, it was ordered cleared by, through our swamp. it was ordered cleared by, through our son clients, so they're taking it down. To answer your question, we're taking it down, I don't know if he's got any plans to put anything back there at the present time.
So the city is, we're all the ones that are?
No, we're not doing it.
Oh, he's doing it.
We got, yeah, if we, yeah. He didn't like our price to do it, so he was able to make it happen.
Okay, anything else?
I got a question, I see some instruction going on at the Burke parking lot.
Yeah.
We approved that a long time ago, but I forgot where we're going through there.
It's a Dunkin' Donut, right at the corner, right across the street from the McDonald's, right next to Mr. Whitefield's insurance office, it's a Dunkin' Donut. So, we're looking forward to them getting, getting started, and they, they have started, the building permit is issued, our, you know, our inspectors, site inspectors are already following up to make sure they're, they're doing what they're supposed to be doing. Building inspectors will soon be following up, fire inspectors after that. Of course, the state does all of our electrical inspections, water and wastewater does the plumbing, so we're keeping an eye on everything as we move forward.
All right, do you think there's?
Motion to adjourn.
I hear a motion to adjourn.